Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here to my call offs. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Madden, the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the public meeting of planning agenda of Monday, October 23rd, 2023.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, none opposed. Moving on to ratify the minutes, Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Madden, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the minutes of the public meeting of planning of September 25th, 2023.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Motion is carried. None opposed. And moving on to zoning amendment Z16, 2023, welcome Chantel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to this evening's public meeting of planning. So as a reminder to everyone, there are no recommendations from the staff at this time. This meeting is to present the application for information purposes only, is to gather comments and concerns from the public or from council to ensure all relevant concerns are addressed, should there be any. A recommendation will then be made at a subsequent council meeting. Therefore, there are no voting tonight, no running from council. It will occur again at a subsequent council meeting. This is to ensure members of council have some time to review the application and bring forward any concerns before the next council meeting. It also gives time for staff to review all comments and concerns. The bylaw amendment document will only be read, passed, and signed at a subsequent council meeting. So tonight we are discussing Z1623. The owner is Duchaine Farms. The location is 22260 and 22262 Lagan Glen Al Road in Delkeith. The official plan designation is agricultural resource lands. Our zoning designation is general agricultural and floodplain, as you see it going through the, going through the property. The purpose of the application is to rezone both the severed and retained portions subject to consent application B8623, conditions number two and three as follows. The retained portion of the property, which is approximately 86.3 acres, from general agricultural to general agricultural special exception, to acknowledge the interior yard setback deficiency from the required nine metres to the proposed 3.15 metres for both agricultural accessory storage buildings, and to prohibit residential development. The severed portion of the property, approximately 2.31 acres, from general agricultural to general agricultural special exception, to acknowledge deficiency in the lot frontage from the required 45 metres to the proposed eight metres. So this will be considered a flagged lot. And will also prohibit agricultural uses. This is an aerial view again, showing the severed and the retained. This is a little bit of a closer view. The land area is approximately 88.61 acres. There was a conditional approval from the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry, given on August 21st, 2023, to sever approximately 2.31 acres of residential land deemed surplus to the needs of a farming operation. The retained portion is approximately 86.3 acres, which is an existing agricultural farming operation. We have received no comments from members of the public. Our RCA submitted a comment for the mapped water course. Alterations to the water course, including but not limited to shorelines, restoration, bridges, culverts, realignment, and cleanouts shall require permission from the Raisin Region Conservation Authority. Here is a copy of the survey. To the right is a little bit closer, a closer view than the left is like a aerial view again, showing exactly where all the structures are located. The newly created proposed property lines will be created in accordance with the municipal zoning bylaw, except for the west property line setback for the new agricultural lot to the two agricultural accessory storage buildings. The closest point to the property line to either building will be 3.15 metres, which is part of the reason for this amendment. The new property line is proposed to be in a such location to keep the area to a minimum to accommodate the residential use for the dwelling, septic well, and all accessory buildings. No change of use permit for the barn or agricultural building, as they are remaining on the agricultural portion of this severance. Prior to the clearing of all conditions for the file, the chief building official will go on site to ensure no other structures are creating a health and safety hazard for the public or future owners. The property currently uses the same entrance as 22260, so they're sharing the same driveway. At the south end of the driveway is where you can go either to this, to either single family dwellings on two separate lots. The proposed severance is a flag lot type surplus severance, and the new entrance is already in place and approved by the counties. Currently, there are no entrances for the field. They are accessed through neighboring fields. Or the owners can definitely apply with SDG Transportation Department for a new entrance way for the field. Here's a laneway. That would bring you to either dwelling. And here's just another view from the driveway. The Planning Act gives municipal councils the authority to pass zoning bylaws and make amendments to existing zoning bylaws under Section 34 of the Planning Act. Provincial Policy Statement, also known as the PPS, provides policy directions on matters of provincial interest related to land use, planning, and development. A residence surplus to a farming operation, as is in this case, provides that the severances can be approved. A new lot will be limited to a minimum size needed to accommodate the residential use, accessory uses, and appropriate sanitary sewage and water services. The official plan contains a number of goals and strategic objectives. Growth is a goal to direct most forms of development to support the efficient use of land. SDG County's official plan policy permits lot creation in agricultural lands for a residence surplus to a farming operation. In conclusion, based on the criteria above, the proposed zoning amendment conforms to the relevant policies of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry's official plan. It is consistent with the provincial policy statement and compliant with the Township of North Glengarry zoning bylaw, number 392000. And that is it for that.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you know what's going to be happening with the severed portion with the house on it? Are they selling it or?
As far as I know, it is being sold, and they are interested in the land more than the actual dwelling.
Than the actual dwelling. Do you know why the two sheds weren't included in the, in the?
With the residential portion? It's because they do, we do try to limit the size to it, and where they were like located, I think the owners or they were, when I, when I was talking with them, felt it was better needed with the land as opposed to with the residential.
Okay, so they weren't looking for a lot that was a little bit bigger?
No.
I, I just think that, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time, but.
And there's still that other house, so they might be using it for storage as well, but.
I just think we need to push the envelope on these things a little bit and have the lots a little bit bigger.
We're actually going in that direction. I've seen some applications go through that, I think they're, they're, they're starting to go that way.
Yeah.
And which is encouraging.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? Second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? And a third and final time?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so being no further business, notice of motion, nothing right now. Adjournment, Councillor Massey.
Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, there being no further business to discuss the public meeting of planning was adjourned at 5:54 PM.
Okay, all those in favor? Motion is carried. We will take a five-minute break and come back for the regular meeting of council. Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting of October 23rd, 2023. Welcome to members of council, staff, and the public. And if I can ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem. Okay, thank you, everyone. And I will call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Massey, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, October the 23rd, 2023.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Adoption of the previous minutes, Councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Cadell, that the minutes of the following meeting be adopted as circulated. Regular meeting of council, October 10th, 2023.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Moving on to delegations, I'd like to welcome the South Nation Conservation Authority, Carl, the CAO General Manager. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of.
Council, that's better. With me tonight is Rhonda Boutz, who's our Secretary Treasurer. She's going to be doing most of the presentation because really she's shepherded these programs over many years and knows most about them and can share that good information with you tonight. I'm not sure if we have access to the slideshow that we, we shared with the municipality.
You do, just one moment, I'll change the slide. And you can control it with the remote control that's on there.
Thank you. Perfect. So our pleasure to be here with you tonight, and we just wanted to give a brief overview of who we are, what we do for you. This is an exercise in, a bureaucratic exercise to bring this agreement to all of the councils in our jurisdiction, but we wanted to take the opportunity to, to share with you some of the things that we do for the residents of your municipality. So we're one of Ontario's 36 conservation authorities. We have a small section of North Glengarry in the northwest of, of the municipality that lies in our jurisdiction on watershed, and the rest of the municipality lies in the Raisin Region Conservation Authority. We have a total of 16 member municipalities, including the city of Ottawa, large jurisdiction, as you can see from the map, that covers a large geographical area, and a population of approximately 200,000. The reason we're here tonight is because several changes have been brought in by the province over the last number of years to the Conservation Authorities Act. One of them was to split our programs into three categories, which is category one, two, and three. Category one are the mandatory programs that we provide on behalf of the province, things like flood mapping, hazard prevention, our regulations program, permits for alterations to water courses and within certain regulated areas. Category two are programs that are done through an agreement with a member municipality. A good example might be our sewage systems program that we provide for a lot of municipalities in the area. And then category three, which is why we're here tonight, those are watershed-wide programs that we provide throughout the jurisdiction. And basically, the, the change in, in the provincial law was that we have to have an agreement if we want to spend some of the municipal levy to provide those category three programs. The programs that many people associate with conservation authorities, and they provide a lot of value to the, the public, so we'd like to tell you a little bit about those. Thanks for moving us on. They fall under three categories. We've got private land stewardship, education and outreach, and conservation land securement. And Rhonda's going to go into a bit more detail.
Thanks, Carl. So we'll just take a few minutes to walk through some of the programs and services that are now considered category three. The first one is our tree planting program. So we have been planting trees since 1990, and we've planted about four million trees since we started. We were averaging about 75,000 seedlings a year up until about 2020, and then surprisingly with the pandemic, we actually saw a surge in the number of trees being ordered, and we've seen that remain consistent. So we're now planting over 100,000 seedlings a year since 2020. We do have subsidies through Forest Ontario for a lot of the planting we do, however, it doesn't cover 100% of the costs for our tree planting program. So what we use municipal levy for is to supplement some of the staffing resources that are needed to deliver a full service program. So that's from taking the landowner's initial call, going out, doing a site visit, all the way through to securing trees, securing contractors to plant those trees, getting them in the ground for the landowner, and then doing follow-up survival assessments. So there's a small portion of the levy that covers that full service of programs, both the 50 million tree program, which we do with Forest Ontario. We also have our over-the-counter sales for smaller projects that don't meet the size requirement for that subsidized program. And we also partner with our municipalities to provide free trees in the spring to residents, so about 500 seedlings per year through that program in partnership with our municipalities. Our next program is our clean water program. It provides cost-share grants to landowners that are doing water quality improvement projects or best management practices on their land. This program has been around since 1993, and we've been providing grants to landowners to do a number of different projects. The graph outlines the different project types that we've done in the last 30 years, with most of the projects falling under the nutrient management category. The total of these projects, cost-wise, is about $13 million, and I like to just point out that this is a reinvestment into our local economy. These projects are being done with local materials supplies, local contractors, local professional services. So the grants that we provide do help, you know, drive the local economy as well. So this program is right now 100% levy-driven, so we provide about $50,000 to $60,000 in grants per year, and it's evaluated through our multi-stakeholder committee as far as determining which projects will be approved. As you're aware, eastern Ontario has about 80% of our land in private ownership, so if we were going to just focus our restoration efforts on lands that we own as a conservation authority, we wouldn't be able to effect change at a watershed scale. So it's very important to be able to help foster habitat restoration and enhancement projects on private land for what landowners that are interested in doing them. The graph shows you investments over the last five years for external funding we've been able to raise in order to do these projects with landowners. And as you can see, for about 174,000 in contributions, we've more than tripled that with over 500,000 coming in from external funding sources. And that's for projects like wetland restoration, buffers, grasslands, those types of projects. So again, the small municipal levy that we use to support this program area is really in the staffing to help find the funding, fill out the applications, and when we're successful, help the landowners work their way through these projects and get them on the ground, and then do the follow-up grant reporting, which for an individual landowner could be quite challenging for some of these programs. So the staffing helps us really support landowners to get the funding we need to do these types of projects.
Yeah, sure. Just to give Rhonda a little break. So education and outreach is another one of our programs. We, we basically deliver these on a cost recovery basis. We also provide grants to the community, for example, school and scout groups who write in and want to do a cleanup day or a tree planting day or, or something along those lines can apply for a grant. And we do, we do use a little bit of levy funding just to allow us to go out and seek out these grants to subsidize these programs and to process the, the checks and so on. The next one is conservation land securement, which is, it's a big part of our category three programs. We do purchase forested land, wetland in the region, and this serves a great public benefit. For every dollar that we spend of levy, we're able to bring in another $3 from various federal funds and through tax benefits that we're able to get partial donations of those lands, and it provides a regional benefit. We, we take some of those lands, we put them into our restoration programs, we plant trees, sometimes we turn them into conservation areas that become a regional benefit for our regions of SDG and UCPR. And all of our land securement is governed by the land securement strategy, which is vetted and approved by our Board of Directors, and you can see on the map there, the, the spread of our lands and properties. We do try and make sure that there's a, you know, it's well-spread out through our, our large jurisdiction.
So again, just to recap for category three, so I would like to reiterate that none of these are new programs, so these are programs that we've delivered for decades. The only change is that now, because we're using a small portion of levy, or we hope to use a small portion of levy to continue the delivery, we need these agreements in place. So again, on the private land stewardship and outreach, it's mostly the staffing component to support the delivery of these grant programs and of the technical support for landowners, as well as the clean water program grants and the community environmental grants that we offer. It's a little less than 4% of the total levy paid by municipalities, so our estimate for 2024 for all of these programs, including the grants, is about 173,000, so just under 4% of the total levy. And similarly, for conservation land securement, it's about 8%, so around 362,000. This includes the securement of the lands, it also includes things like ancillary costs for legal or appraisals. For North Glengarry, these numbers are estimates based on the 2023 levy apportionment and the, the budget direction that we worked with last year, which was two and a half percent plus growth. So these are not final numbers, they'll vary slightly, but they're very, very close to what you see on the screen. Your total levy for our area is about 17,000. The 12% that we're asking for to put towards category three is just over 2,000. So again, the reason why we're here tonight is to ask the council to consider entering into an agreement, which we're required to do by the province in order to use any of the municipal levy towards these programs. We are proposing a multi-stakeholder agreement with all 16 of our municipalities. We feel this is reflective of our watershed approach, which is core to us. It'll also help reduce administrative burden moving forward, it's much easier to administer one agreement as opposed to 16. So again, the agreement sets that 12% maximum that would be directed towards category three programs and services. The agreement has a few requirements in the act which we've included, including five-year renewal clause. There are clauses in there for notices for any amendments or cancellation. What we're proposing is a five-year term with an automatic five-year renewal if every party is satisfied with our review after the first five years. So that is our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from members of council?
Just wondering that 12% and we're just that little corner of your thing, is that fair?
So we are using the same method for apportionment that we do for our general levy. So really, what we're asking is not to make any changes to how you pay your levies. It would still be the same amount. We just need an agreement to take that small 12% portion that we need to deliver the programs across the watershed. So it is, it's the way we do our entire levy calculation, so we tried to maintain that consistency. If you want to add.
Yeah, it's 12% out of our totals of $16,000.
Yeah.
So it's 12% out of every levy. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And it's not new money. This is, we based it on what we've been doing over the past five, 10 years or so and averaged it out. So it's not new money. It's just saying how much we're spending on that type of program.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Williams?
This is not directly related to your presentation, but I was very interested in the MTTIC Healing Lodge constructed on County Road 22. I was wondering what that was.
It's a partnership. So they just finished construction. It opened earlier this year. So they basically have asked permission to construct this lodge. It's meant to be an open space for not only use by the First Nations community, but an opportunity for the public to engage and learn about First Nation cultures. So it is on our site. It's actually just past the road track on County Road 22, just outside of Maxville. So they have a Facebook page, which I'd be happy to share, and they do different educational programming. So they're in an agreement with us for seven years for that property. So typically, they build, stay in one location for seven years, and then move to another location.
Well, thank you for that. And I think it's a great partnership. Well done.
We were on a tour, and we weren't sure what it was. We thought there was an encampment happening.
It does have an agreement.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, thanks very much for your presentation, and it will come back at our next meeting and for approval. So thank you very much. Okay, moving on to delegation Cornwall Business Enterprise Centre. Shawna Beggs, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be here this evening to give you a little bit of information about the Cornwall Business Enterprise Centre. My name is Shawna Beggs, and I manage the centre in town. Today, I'll just go over briefly what the centre is all about, a little bit of history, and a little bit of the activities that we've been doing over the last few months. So first, I'd like to just take a minute to introduce the enterprise centre as a whole. We've been in business for about 25 years, just over 25 years, since 1996. Our team is very small. There is myself. We have an admin assistant, and we also currently have a one-contract employee. The centre itself is primarily funded through the province, through the Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade. We cover a very large area. So we cover the city of Cornwall, Aquasosni, and everywhere within Stormont, Dundas, and So the daily operations of the centre are operated through Cornwall Economic Development, which is located in the civic complex in Cornwall. Even though our centre is actually located in that specific location, that is just our address, because we really do serve the entire community, including SDNG. We have various local partners. We work with the counties. We work with the local townships and the EDOs. We work with the city in Aquasosni, and as well as a variety of different community partners throughout the region. Additionally, our centre is actually affiliated with the Ontario Regional Innovation Centers, or RICS, particularly Launch Lab in Eastern Ontario, which offers specialized support to entrepreneurs in the field of innovation and technology. These partnerships and affiliations strengthen the Cornwall Business Enterprise Centre's capabilities and broaden its scope, enabling us to cater to diverse range of entrepreneurs and businesses throughout the region. So we'd like to call ourselves a one-stop shop for business services. Our goal is to support the success and growth of small business within the community. And we have a few objectives that we aim to meet in order to measure this goal. The first objective is to provide guidance and assistance to business owners throughout personalized consultations, addressing their specific needs and challenges. The second one is to disseminate valuable information and resources to small businesses, keeping them informed about market trends, industry insights, and regulatory changes. The third is offering training programs and workshops to enhance skills and knowledge of entrepreneurs, empowering them to run their business effectively. The fourth is to facilitate mentorship opportunities, connecting experienced professionals with small business owners, and to provide guidance, inspiration, and support. And finally, to foster collaboration and networking among small businesses by organizing events and workshops, seminars, so that entrepreneurs can connect and learn from each other and explore potential partnerships. So hopefully, over the next few slides, I'll be able to show you tangible examples of how we've been able to meet these objectives throughout the year. Okay, so I'd like to just point your attention to these two big numbers. So 98.1% of employer businesses are small businesses, which indicates the importance and contribution of the sector in the local economy. And 64% of the total labor force is indicated within that small business community. So they play a vital role within economic development in our area. SEBEC collaborates with local economic development offices, including North Glengarry. We work well with that, in promoting regional investment opportunities and entrepreneurship. We also work closely with local stakeholders to enhance the attractiveness of the region with potential investors. The focus is showcasing the benefits and advantages of investing in the region, such as available resources, infrastructure, and supportive business environment. We actively engage in marketing and promotional activities to highlight the region's unique selling points and investment potential. And one example of this is just this week, we are partnering with a Spark Centre, and we are hosting a number of out-of-country entrepreneurs that are looking to set up business in our community. Through strategic partnerships and collaboration, SEBEC aims to attract new businesses and, of course, facilitate their growth and success. So how do we actually help? Like the day-to-day operations, what do we do with entrepreneurs every day outside of our bigger events? Well, we offer one-on-one consultations, and this is the primary function of the Business Enterprise Centre. We provide personalized consultations for entrepreneurs. We help them navigate through various aspects of starting or growing a business. These consultations, they offer guidance on topics like market research, financial planning, marketing strategies, and many, many more. Sometimes it's just brainstorming and getting all the ideas outside of their head onto paper. We also help with registering a business. So every business in Ontario should be registered through the province, and we kind of walk them through that. We talk about different business licenses, permits, and any regulatory documents that they do require. Recently, a lot of our clients have been new to Canada, and that's a whole other ballgame for regulatory information. So we're also assisting a lot of new Canadians in that respect. We offer many workshops. One of them was just this past week, where for Bridges to Better Business, where we make connections with entrepreneurs. We have industry experts come and explain what they do, and hopefully are able to give insight and really motivate our local business owners with the stories that they hear. We offer many training programs, and I'll go into a couple in more detail, that specialize in various skill training and development for entrepreneurs just starting out, but also for entrepreneurs who are looking to increase their skills. One of those important things in training is business plan writing, and we offer extensive business plan writing in many different aspects. We help with funding opportunities. For example, I just posted something this afternoon online for, through the province, they're offering a new funding opportunity for businesses to apply to, to have e-chargers at their business. So funding of all different kinds, and we try to be, like I said, a one-stop shop, so we kind of filter the information through and direct people where we can. So this is a number I'm really proud of. This number is the amount of consultations or connections, I should say, that we've made just this year. So we have literally connected over 1,200 times with small business owners, myself and my team, with small business owners throughout the year, and it's still not quite over yet, so we're hoping to make a few more. But these connections are really important, because not only does the Business Enterprise Centre do the one-on-one consultations, but we also do a lot of follow-ups. So those businesses, whenever they come in and they speak with us, they're not alone. So they have a full range of support, and we're there to help them through step one all the way to the grand opening where their ribbon is cut and open the doors. We offer a lot of services that are accessible and inclusive. Some of those services, we try to ensure that our programming is done not only in person, but also online to make sure that not only are we meeting the needs of the demographic in our immediate area, but also pushed out to our greater region. So here is an example of a picture of one of our Entrepreneur Roundtable speakers. These three individuals are local business owners, and they're at various different sizes of business, various different levels of business. And they were able to come to a panel. We set this one in particular up at Lost Village's Brewery in Long Su. And they just spoke about their business. They just told their story, and they had an opportunity for clients, small business owners within the community, to come out and just in a very comfortable setting, ask questions, get advice, listen to tips and tricks of what worked well for them and what they may have changed had they known better before. So this was very successful, and we've had a number of these over the last year. We cover a variety of different topics that range from marketing strategies to financial management. We've had ones for strategic planning, legal compliance, succession planning, technology adoption for online businesses. Again, our presenters are definitely experts in their field, and they have a wealth of knowledge. And the best part is, is that whenever they're participating with SEBEC, they really want to help. So not only are they there for the event, but they're able to make those connections with the business owners afterwards. They hand out their card, they make those connections, they're able to communicate even after we've had our session, which has actually translated into many partnerships. We encourage interactive formats, so we love questions. So the more questions, I always find, the better for any event. And usually, the first question is the hardest, and then they kind of grow from there. But the questions themselves indicate to me where the crowd sits, and if we're doing a good job, and if we need to maybe potentially have another event to cover some of the topics that were questioned about. A lot of these different workshops offer practical tips as well. So we try to make a hands-on. For example, we had a Canva workshop just last week. For those of you who aren't familiar with the software Canva, it's an online program that's free. It's excellent for small businesses. It takes a lot of pressure off the design, but you're able to consistently post material with your branding, make flyers, all that stuff, for very, well, really for no cost. And it's very easy to use. So one of our programs that I'd like to touch base on is the Starter Company. This is our signature program at the centre. We've had much success with the program itself. This year alone, we've had 125 people register for Starter Company. We have approximately $57,000 in grants that we're able to hand out to participants. So how it works is people interested, entrepreneurs that are either starting, growing, or purchasing a business, are able to take part in the training program. It lasts about eight to 10 weeks, and we have a variety of different portions that follow through a business plan writing. Because what we found is that telling someone to write a business plan and actually having them write the business plan are very different things. So the program itself is actually designed around creating that plan in small chunks. So by the time you actually get to the end of the program, you have a solid business plan, a solid financial forecast, and you're really confident in the business that you have to present to others. And if you score high enough, you get to then present your idea to a grant panel and for potentially to receive a $4,500 grant. So we have six of those in each session. Sometimes we go to eight, because we kind of maneuver the money a little bit, so that somebody might not get 45, they might get 25, so we can spread it out a little further. As you can see on the graph, there's about 39%, about 40% or so of Starter Company businesses actually are from SDG. Here's an example of some of our friendly faces in the program. You may recognize a couple. One of them is Anna. She just opened Sunwheel Farm. She is a Starter Company participant and a grant recipient, as well as Tom Manley, who owns Tom's Pantry, just on the corner in Alexandria. So he is also a Starter Company participant. Our second biggest program is Summer Company. So I'll point your attention to the graph right off the bat, is about 56% or so of our participants within Summer Company are from SDG. So it's a great opportunity for youth to be able to take advantage of a program where they can open their own business, have the training to support that business, and also receive some money. So for those youths that participate, they can get up to $3,000 at the end of the summer when they're finished the program. And it's really an opportunity where we, again, we match them with mentors, we keep track, there's somebody to support them if they have questions financially or what have you. And it's been very successful. There are a number of youths in the program. We had a really cool business, actually, from North Glengarry this past summer. She was a student from Queens, and she's designing a robotic lawnmower that's green technology. So just listening to her speak is like, oh my goodness. But it was a very cool business, and she's continuing. So a lot of these businesses that are taking part in the Summer Company are not just, they start maybe at Summer Company, but they continue on after. We've even had a couple go from Starter Company, they've graduated, and then they take the Starter Company program to then pursue their business a little bit further. These are some newer programs that we offer through the centre. This is from some funding that we received back in April through the Digital Main Street Programme. This program is excellent. I've actually taken advantage of it myself. As an entrepreneur, a few years back, I did the Shop Here program to design my e-commerce shop. So that program is still available for businesses that require an e-commerce store. They can sign up through Shop Here, and it's free for the first six months, and you get somebody matched with you to help you design, and you can ask questions, too. It's really excellent. The second one is our Digital Transformation Grant. This just ended on September 30th, but we're on track to have over $100,000 of grants, so $2,500 each, and we're on track for 100,000, just over 100,000, to be approved by this particular grant. So normally, our area doesn't have a digital service squad. So all over the province, everybody has a digital service squad, and everybody's able to take advantage of this Digital Transformation Grant, but we weren't, because we didn't have one. So back in April, when the centre applied for the funding to get this squad, that enabled us to hire someone to be able to go out and really help business owners achieve their digital success in all different forms. An example would be just a Google business profile, which surprisingly, a lot of businesses still don't have. So we're helping with that. And so I'm really proud to say that $100,000 is staying in SDG, which otherwise would be outside of our area. The final one is the digital, Canada Digital The final one is the digital, Canada Digital Adoption Program, which can get confusing because there's a couple of programs that are the exact same name. This one in particular is for e-commerce businesses and it's $2,400. It is still open for business, so we're still promoting this and helping business owners apply for this particular program. These are just some numbers through the, through the Digital Main Street Program that you can kind of take advantage of or see rather where small businesses have taken advantage of. There's been over 400 small businesses that have used the program. Shop Here, e-commerce shops have started, tons of consultations. On this slide, when it was prepared, there was $77,000 and like I said, we're like just, we're just on the cusp of 100,000 as of this morning. Here's a few examples of some of the different participants that took advantage. Our digital service coordinator has been going out to get everybody's picture once they get the approval, which is fairly quick. And they get the $2,500 grant right in their bank account, which is really nice, no strings And finally, this is one of the biggest areas that I think our centre has really capitalized on, especially in the last year. We have had many different events. One of them is Breakfast Connections, which we had here just a couple of weeks ago in North Glengarry. We've had ones that focus on art, Artpreneur. We've had a giant youth entrepreneurship event earlier in the year. And of course, those Entrepreneur Roundtables that we are trying to have at least twice a year to really encourage that mentorship and conversation within the entrepreneur community. And we've had over 800 participants. So if you take all of the different events that we've had, outside of just the individual connections that we've made with small business owners, we've also provided them with opportunities to connect with each other and 800 people have taken advantage of this. So without further ado, I'd like to thank you for your time and I encourage you to check out the Business Enterprise Centre website, follow our social pages for updates on new programming. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. Thank you for your presentation and it was a very enjoyable breakfast, listening to Alexandria Molding give their impressions of what they do. So it was a, it was a good, good morning. Any questions or comments? Councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Shawna. Thank you. Nice to see you. I had a conversation with somebody on Friday, a young lady in the area, and we were talking small business. She was asking about resources. I mentioned to you, this ended up in our package on the weekend, so I shared this with her over the weekend. She said today she'd get in touch with you. I'm just curious, no solid numbers, but of the, the 39% in SDNG for the business starter program and the 56 for the summer, any insight as to how much is going to each municipality? Is it, do you find it pretty evenly as far as uptake or is it sort of skewed?
It is skewed a little bit towards the east. So the Dundas's, both south and north, we have some opportunity there to work with more business owners, but predominantly, most of our clients come from South Dormant, South Glengarry, and North Glengarry. And then North Dormant and then the Dundas's are evenly at the bottom. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I was just curious.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thanks very much, Shawna. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to staff reports. Administrative Department, 2023 Municipal Emergency Control Group update. Councillor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Martin. That council of the township of North Glengarry accepts Staff Report AD 2023-09, being a report on municipal emergency control group meetings for 2023 for information purposes only.
Thank you. And this, I believe Jenna will be giving this report. Everybody, don't look at her. This is her first report. I just looked, I just looked on YouTube. There are 1,000 viewers right now, so don't be nervous. Don't be nervous.
Okay, okay.
Welcome, Jenna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as per section 21, sorry, 2.1 of the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, council must adopt a bylaw that establishes and develops an execution of the emergency management program along with its members. In accordance to the act, the bylaw states that the community emergency management coordinator, such as myself, is required to submit an annual report to the Ontario Fire Marshals and Emergency Management, which details the group's meetings, trainings, and public education required to be compliant for the year. My mouth is getting ahead of me. So as mentioned in the staff report, the municipal emergency control group met three times during the last eight months. And within this time period, the community emergency management coordinator was appointed, as well as the emergency information officer. The group reviewed the municipality's critical infrastructure, the emergency response plan, the bylaw itself, the hazard identification risk assessment. And in May, during the Public Education Week, the information was released on our social media, as well as was published in the newspaper regarding how to prepare your home for an emergency. For the training aspect of our program, we actually participated in a tabletop in the month of September where there was a fictional emergency declared by the mayor due to an explosion at the McEwen's Petroleum Facility, as well as a number of the members, excuse me, went to the basic emergency management course that was held by the Ontario Fire Marshal and Emergency Management Group. So the compliance report will be completed at the end, hopefully, of this month and will be submitted to make the December 31st deadline. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Jenna. Any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor.
Well done, Jenna. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to 2024 council meetings. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Madden. That council of the township of North Glengarry receives Staff Report AD 2023-07 and that council approves the 2024 meetings of council as per the attached schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the proposed schedule for 2024. Staff thought it was important to get this out early. That way, we can then set forth the committee meetings and everything else. We've made some slight adjustments to the meetings for next year, just to accommodate other things happening like a conference in June and some holidays, as well as the conferences that council goes to. So hopefully, there's no conflicts that we could see at this point.
Anybody see anything out of the ordinary? We're all good with it so far and that'll all be sent out to our phones or our calendars. Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you. Moving on to request for council support, North Glengarry Besse Project, Compass Renewable Energy Consulting, Inc., Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not sure how I got stuck with this one, but anyway.
Councillor Manley's not here.
Because Councillor Manley's not here. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Massey. Whereas the proponent is proposing to construct and operate a long-term reliability project as defined and with characteristics outlined in the table below, under the long-term request for proposals issued by the Independent Electricity System Operator, or IESO, pursuant to LTI RFP proposals that receive the formal support of the local jurisdiction authorities of all the project communities in which the long-term reliability project is located in the form of a support resolution will be awarded rated criteria points for the purpose of ranking the proposal in relation to other proposals for the contract under the LTI RFP. And now therefore be it resolved that the council of the township of North Glengarry supports the development, construction, and operation of the long-term reliability project on municipal lands. And this resolution's sole purpose is to enable the proponent to receive rated criteria points under LTI RFP or to satisfy its obligations under any awarded LTI contract and may not be used for the purpose of any other form of approval in relation to the proposal or long-term reliability project or any other purpose. Rated criteria points will be used to rank the proponent's proposal in relation to other proposals received by the IESO under the LTI RFP. Boy.
Thank you. Take it away.
Thank you. So I do apologize to Deputy Mayor Williams. That is the actual resolution that we had to pass. That's new, so I did look back. Mississippi Mills passed for their Almott project, which was presented to us at the public meeting last week. Their, their resolution was not that robust, but certainly with the second intake, it seems like they needed more details for the resolution from council. So as council is aware, in September, we had Compass come and do a presentation to us. We did have a lot of questions that evening from them. Since then, council did receive the answers to those questions, as well as I found actually that the public meeting last week was very good. So it did clear up a lot of the questions that we had. The presentation's included here. There is also a website, which I included in the report. I do encourage you to go on there. It does provide very detailed information about their project. It is, it is specific to the North Glengarry BES, BESSS project. That will be available to the public. People can go on and look. As you're aware, this is a project that's proposed north of the 417. During the public meeting, they didn't indicate to us they have not received support yet from the MTO for the project. So that's one thing they do need to cross off their list. We are in constant communication with Compass, so if staff do have any questions, I know that Chief Roy was at the meeting as well. He had some questions answered there around some of the emergency management perspective. You know, certainly to the controlled group, this will be included on our HIRA as something within North Glengarry that we would need to identify as a risk for a fire. That again, would be something they would have to consult with, with MTO. We, we certainly spoke to them that evening. Like I said, we've heard back from them on some questions we have. This is something that has to pass through council for this project to move forward, is what we heard. And the timeline is, I believe he said, December for that. So from a staff's perspective, there's no concerns from the Director of Public Works, from Chief Roy, or from the Director of Planning, Bylaw, and Building. So staff is recommending that we move forward with the municipal support resolution from this evening.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councillor Madden.
Should that be lands within the municipality? That kind of makes it sound like it's our land that we own. Just to make that clear for the public as well.
That's included, I, it's included in the support resolution that they gave. It is definitely not our lands. It's being leased from a property owner.
And I did see the draft that this is modeled on.
Yeah.
But I'm wondering if that was also intended to be a project that was in conjunction with municipality? Because they did talk a lot about municipalities and...
Certainly. I mean, if we, we can certainly change it. I have no problem with that.
I'd suggest just lands within the municipality.
Okay.
That's just to make...
I don't imagine it would change anything substantial, but I do agree with you. It does sound...
Does sound like on municipal lands. Good pickup. Further questions? Go ahead.
You maybe add the word private lands? Because then that way...
Sure. Yeah, no problem. We can change that.
Okay. Further questions? All those in favor? Motion is carried, none opposed. Moving on to Community Services Department, Tree Canada Grant. Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams. That the council of the township of North Glengarry receives the staff report CS 2023-20 and that council directs staff to apply for Tree Canada's Tremendous Communities Grant to a maximum amount of $10,000.
Thank you. Welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as council knows, occasionally, we get opportunities to apply for grants and we bring these to council to get direction. This is really well-aligned with possibly some work being done by the Rural Affairs Committee, and we are proposing that we apply to the Tree Canada's Tremendous Community Grant in a maximum amount of $10,000 and that we work with the group to identify a place where we could work on this project. There's no requirement for matched funding. That said, if ever we wanted to enlarge the scope of the project, there is $5,000 in the municipal budget already on reserve for this type of a project. So that's basically our proposal tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's great. That's good news. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is great. And any idea like how many, does this mean like, like 10 trees or 100 trees?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. It would depend on the project. It might depend on the location. There might have to be site rehabilitation. So I think that's something that would come back through the Rural Affairs Committee, possibly if they have a meeting prior to, to the deadline. If not, it's definitely something we'd bring back to council during a committee of the whole, so on and so forth.
Okay, I just, just a comment. I'd like to see, you know, some of these trees planted and spread out across the township, especially in our, in some of our hamlets, small town, the, well, the hamlets in particular. Like over the years, we've seen quite a lot of tree planting in Maxville, for example. So I would say, you know, bring those trees to other communities who could benefit from them.
So we'll definitely look and see what the guidelines suggest for the projects and discuss it with the committee members.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just would like to mention also, Tree Canada is a group that we did work with in Maxville, the park there. So they were wonderful partners and collaborators. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick one. Do we, and with this application, do we have to specify the project? Or are we just asking for dollars towards a project to be determined?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. No, we do have to identify the project. We have to come to them with a robust project. There's a lot of competition for these types of grants, so the stronger our proposal, the more chances we have of obtaining the funds.
Okay. Further questions? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Thank you, Ann. Moving on to Treasury Department, request for proposal RFP for the supply of banking services. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams. That council of the township of North Glengarry awards the request for proposal for the supply of banking services to RBC Royal Bank for a term of five years commencing January 1st, 2024.
Thank you. Welcome, Kim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The request for proposal was advertised for a five-year term. Three proposals were received and they were scored based on a matrix that included things like interest earned, fees and charges, a transition plan, online banking, innovative solutions, community participation, and references. The average scores for the evaluations resulted in RBC scoring 95, BMO scoring 80, and Scotiabank hitting 44. And what's very funny about that is five years ago, when we did the same thing, RBC and BMO scored exactly the same. So, but most, what was really great is that the banks were coming up to the plate. Most fees were waived. Two of the banks had exactly the same interest rates. It was close. The, one thing we did notice is of the references provided, only one bank, we asked for three references, only one bank, their references contacted us. One, we could only get ahold of one, the rest were, I never got ahold... only get a hold of one. The rest were, I never got a hold of. So we did our best to evaluate it, and the recommendation is to go with RBC.
Great. Thank you for your report. Questions or comments? Seems pretty straightforward. All those in favor? Motion is carried. None opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel.
Moving on to building, planning, and bylaw. Road widening bylaw, Hope We Met Road. Counselor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin. That council of the township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw number thirty dash twenty twenty-three, being a bylaw to acquire and dedicate a portion of a property for road widening purposes, and that bylaw thirty dash twenty twenty-three be read a first, second, and third time and enacted this twenty-third day of October, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, counselor. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little bit of background analysis on this bylaw here. The office has received a request from Wilcox Law Office from Cloussen-Birdon regarding a road widening bylaw and adoption of the same by the township on the property known as Lockheel, Concession Three Gore, part of Lot One on registered plan number fourteen R six seven zero one, Part Three, Hope We Met Road in Glen Robertson in the Township of North Glengarry. The request relates to a seventh application, B dash one oh four dash twenty-two, that was conditionally approved on October thirteenth in twenty twenty-two. One of the conditions was to allow for a widening of Hope We Met Road, where the applicant was to dedicate a portion of the road frontage to be transferred to the township for this purpose. The requirement for road widening is often imposed where the adjacent road does not meet the minimum width standard. In order to correct this on title, a bylaw to confirm the acquisition of certain lands and to dedicate the same as part of the public highways is being presented to council for consideration. Option one, that council adopts the bylaw as presented, or option two, council does not adopt the bylaw. There are no financial implications to the township. The bylaw has been attached, and Wilcox Law Office was consulted on this report, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Chantel. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion is carried. None opposed. Moving on to Public Works Department, Maxville Lagoons Environmental Assessment. Counselor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Cadell. At the council of the township of North Glengarry receives report PW twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five, Maxville Lagoons Environmental Assessment, EA, and that council authorizes the mayor and CAO to enter into an agreement with EVB Engineering to proceed with the environmental assessment for the Maxville Lagoons based on our current unit rates to be funded from twenty twenty-three unspent capital dollars.
Thank you. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Maxville, over the, over the last few years, we've installed different measuring equipment at the influence location to the Maxville Lagoons to increase the accuracy of, of the numbers that we'd be getting there. Now, a little bit of time has passed. We're fairly confident that we're up around the eighty percent threshold in which the Ministry of Environment will come and ask us to do an environmental assessment. It's also the first step into expanding the lagoon and facilitating growth. So we suggest that we get ahead of the ministry coming and ordering us to do an environmental assessment and going ahead and getting it done. We've been working with EVB to work on the master wastewater plan and water plan. They are very, very familiar with our facilities, and I'm recommending that instead of going out to tender with this, that we utilize their current unit rates, as they are in line with industry standard, and that we go and get them to complete the first part of the environmental assessment before the end of the year, and then continue on with, with them into, into next year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Counselor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, you know, noticing the decline here from ninety-five percent, it was at ninety, or I should say, you know, it's gained capacity from ninety-five percent to eighty-seven percent. That's about eight percent. That, so, you know, I'm thinking of the decline in population in Maxville at eight point three percent. That matches those numbers right there, eight percent. You know, I'm just, just saying, is it time really to be jumping ahead, you know, when Maxville's population is declining?
Yep. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, this is actually just correlation, though, and not causation. The, the main reason for that jump is a high rainfall event in twenty twenty that, that made those, those line items come higher. So one of the problems that we have in Maxville is that we don't have a robust storm system. It's something that we're working on. The provincial mandate came out not too long ago, and so we're at the, the front end of stormwater. We're investigating our system as it is right now, and making sure that we can separate our storm and our sewer. However, in Maxville, as in Alexandria and, and anywhere that we have a wastewater system, is that the sump pumps are often hooked up to the sewer system, and a lot of those residents don't have any other alternative. So that's, that's why you see such a high correlation between stormwater events. And I know it's, it's a, it's a, you know, very big coincidence there, but it is very much tied to essentially the rain, the rainfall that you're going to get. And in terms of, you can break those numbers down into, you know, small units as well. Maxville is a very small system. So if, with the increase in, you know, weather events, that capacity that we have left isn't, isn't a huge amount, like a large storm event could push us over the threshold, and the ministry will come along and say, yes, you, you have to do it. And I would much prefer that we go ahead and do it now on our terms than, than be forced to at a later date. So, sorry, there's a little bit further on your question there, but I feel like it...
Yep, follow up.
Hundred and forty thousand dollars for environmental assessment?
Yeah.
That's so, I, I just don't think there's such an emergency that, you know, that a development is, is imminent, and the climate change or something's going to make it necessary. I just say, why not wait till you do have to do it?
Go ahead.
Through you, Ms. Mayor. It's actually, at eighty percent, they would actually ask you to do it already, because we don't have a tertiary treatment system. So at the Alexandria Lagoon, for example, we have air raiders, and then Three Lagoons, and then we have a post-treatment system, so we can do a continuous discharge. At Maxville, we have to do a seasonal discharge. So it's actually an oversight of the, actually, I'm not going to say an oversight. It would be, we've had a lot of inspectors recently, and there's been a lot of changeover there. So I, if we didn't have, if the ministry didn't have that staff changeover, I'm sure that we would have already had an order to, to go ahead and do this, and to maintain a good relationship with the, the ministry. It's a good, it's good for us to self-regulate and make sure that we've always got the wastewater capacity available for our residents.
One, one more?
Yep, go ahead. Sure.
How long is the environmental assessment good for?
Through you, Ms. Mayor. So they take a year to complete, and there generally isn't an expiry on them, but you need to use that to then apply with the ministry for actual construction. So there's a, there's another process at the end.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions? Go ahead. Counselor Martin.
Now, if the ministry were to find that we're over capacity or nearing over that eighty percent, how abrupt, like how quickly would they want to see a change, or do they just want an environmental assessment done at that point, or, or an expansion of the lagoons, or?
Through you, Ms. Mayor. Yes, so there, we aren't in danger of a, of a big fine or anything like that, because we, the danger would be that they would ask us to go and do the assessment, and we would lose a lot of trust with them, because they would say, you guys are smart enough. You should know that we should already be going and doing this. You shouldn't need me to tell you. Let's go and do the environmental assessment. So...
So it would be better to have it in our budget now and go ahead and do it?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions or comments? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. Item, no items under the consent agenda, no new business, no submotion. Next regular meeting is Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at six P. M. Question period.
Okay, I'll ask a question.
Okay.
A couple of weeks ago, in the Seaway News, it said North and South Glengarry were talking as to what they could do about the Glengarry news closing. Has anything come from that, or?
So, yeah, so we, we had discussions that evening, and just to be very upfront, it's not about, it's not the township's purchasing the news and running a newspaper. It's not that at all. We have been, we've gone through a couple of prospective owners. We have one now that is quite serious. We're just that they're at the final stages of, of getting it done. As you know, you get to the end on these things, and there's some, there's some little things that bother both sides. So we're at that point, hoping that we have something done by the, by Wednesday or the end of this week. So, okay. Okay. No further questions? We are going in closed session, and so before we do that, I would just like to take this opportunity. This is Kim's last meeting with us, and Kim, I just want to thank you for the years of dedication that you gave to us and the hard work. And we, you know, we're very happy with the Treasury Department and where we're at right now, and you have a lot to do with that. So we, I wish you good luck in the future. I know you're not going very far, but we'll find you. And I don't, that's not a threat. But we're very happy that you're doing what you want to do, and excited for your future.
Thank you very much.
Good. Good luck.
Good luck.
All right. Go ahead, one. We're good? Okay. So we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll go in closed session. Thanks, everyone. Thank you to the public for joining us this, this evening, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks at the next regular council meeting. Thanks.